Great, so it's 10:31 and I'd like to bring this session to open. And let me ask if anyone has any items to discuss?
Other than NAPA?
Yes, well, just what items would anyone like to discuss? I'm sure how to open a meeting without a traditional.
All right, Madam Chair, if I may ask that the topic on the agenda, take its cue from the last joint meeting with the commissioners in which they asked us as a board to return to them at their meeting at 11 o'clock to discuss the two options they have proposed, the NAPA building and the North Showers building. They've given, they've offered those to the Board of Elections for the purpose of helping to facilitate 2022 elections. I do have a recommendation for the board and I have emailed you some security information for your consideration. My preference would be that we not discuss the security information on this meeting, but I would request that you supplement and add your feedback so that we can provide that to Mr. Krone who's on the meeting today. That would be my recommendation for the agenda, but I certainly am open to anything else, especially with this being, I think, Mr. Garlet's first official meeting on the election board. That his, whatever is important to him to discuss, take precedence over my recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for those recommendations. And let me then ask Mr. Garlet if you have any recommendations or agenda items for today? We'll just list them and then go through them.
Yeah, so I think, I guess, what I would like to hear is the pros and cons of both the NAPA and North Showers and what the intent for those would be. My initial feeling would be, you know, to get a space as I think that it's kind of known that it is needed. But I think we have some good data presented in terms of number of voters per hour and any hiccups that happened in 2020 at just the Johnson Building. And according to the December 9th meeting, it's my understanding that the expansion there, at least right now, is not an option. So I think we just need to hear the pros and cons of NAPA and North Showers. And I would propose also that we have, this was originally intended to be an executive as I felt that it full well fell under, according to what we learned at the election, state election conference. But being the time crunch that we were under last Friday, I think that we probably made the wisest decision just to have this part of work session, but I would still recommend or ask to have a, an executive session for the security issues of whatever building we decide to propose for use. And I know we're short on time, so.
We are short on time.
Thank you. Well, let me officially welcome you to your first election board meeting in the capacity as a member of the board. So thank you for those. I have three recommendations then to discuss the NAPA building and North Showers building, to, that we have to, we all need to discuss security concerns, but those are supposed to be, you know, that it's difficult to discuss security issues and concerns in this setting and that we have a recommendation for an executive session at some point to discuss those, as well as a request for recommendations on how the spaces work. And so I will add to that, that, you know, I have the same questions and concerns and would like to hear more about the possibilities for using the spaces offered, as well as the implications of these spaces or using these spaces for managing voter lines and convenience, as well as access for voters and particularly interested in making sure that any location is easily accessible by voters, you know, no matter what mobility or other types of concerns they might have. So let me start then by asking Clerk Brown, would you like to open the discussion on these items?
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you so much. So let's just level set with the fact that I have asked for the entirety of the Johnson Hardware. That will not happen and we level set with that. The commissioners have offered, in their presentation to us back in September, they offered the use of, the full use of the NAPA building and the full use of the second floor space on the north end of Showers, which we used Mr. Garlet's on for presidential voting as a satellite in 2016. They have offered us both of these spaces on either a temporary or permanent basis. What I am hopeful for, we will need a satellite. It is anticipated that the voter turnout, which of course is what drives everything, voter turnout, will be such that we're going to need to relieve some of the pressure at Election Central. I'm not interested in moving it all out of Election Central because the election supervisor's office is there and voter registration, the voter registration office is there. What that means is that in real time, if voters are going through to vote early and there is an issue with their registration, we can stop right then and send them just a few feet away to the voter registration office to try to work through those. So it wouldn't be ideal for me to use NAPA as a satellite, but because we have to have something, I'd like to at least put it on the table as a consideration and as a placeholder, because I have already recommended that on the January meeting, we discuss a proposal for satellites, a proposal for satellites, several satellites during 2022. So because, okay, so that's point one. The part of North Showers, I'm hopeful to use as a place to do military and overseas voting. We were fortunate, a silver lining in the pandemic was that we got to use the probation offices on the other side of our wall at Election Central and that's how we processed those ballots, but it still was not large enough. It was just the best that we could do under the circumstances to keep everything under one roof. This too is not ideal. I'd rather everything be where, within close proximity of the ballot room, but it is the shorter distance, it is the shorter distance to the ballot room at Election Central. Let me look at the chat really quickly. We gotta pop up in the chat.
Yeah, I can read that just for anyone who can't see it. We have a message from Sherri Morris to all of us saying, "It is possible likely to have a voter registration/SVRS hookup at any satellite or at NAPA for a voting site." We did the same thing with earlier satellites.
Okay. Thank you, Sherri. So, so I'm trying to be conscious of time and I'm trying to not talk too fast because I know I'm saying a lot. But ultimately, what I'm saying is I'm recommending that we have, for temporary purposes, that we have both the NAPA and the north end of Showers and that we outfit NAPA for security purposes as though it would be a satellite facility. But I'm also asking the board to keep in mind that I will be approaching in January with additional recommendations for a satellite. And I'm hopeful I've made that make sense. Thank you.
Thank you. So let me just, just reiterate from that. I will add discussion of satellite locations to our January, to the agenda for our January election board meeting. So thank you for that and I've noted that. And I had some questions, but let me ask Mr. Garlet if he had any comments or?
I have, I have a few questions written down, but go ahead.
So my question was just going to be, I understand that we can't, that we can't discuss security concerns necessarily in this setting, but as a big picture concern, I'm wondering if you could tell us a little bit, if Clerk Brown, you could tell us a little bit more about the implications of separating, you know, these functions and ballots and, you know, how that would be addressed? Like, for example, I understand from previous meetings that if we, you know, if there's a need to move ballots from one building to another, that it needs to be accompanied by a bipartisan team, things like that.
Absolutely. Nothing, here's the bottom line. Nothing happens without a bipartisan team in connection to the ballots. My concern as far as election security is, you know, the shortest distance between those ballots and the ballot room, which is where we hold all of the ballots until we can begin to process, excuse me, process them for elections. This is, this is a Band-Aid on a bigger issue. We can make this work in 2022. We can make a satellite work. We can make everything work. We, that's the problem. We have an amazing team who knows how to make it work. But the bottom line, of course, is that I would imagine, based on national news coverage, election security and election integrity are going to be paramount. We do not, we have been incredibly fortunate to have great elections in Monroe County. I don't anticipate anything changing about that, but eyes are gonna be on these ballots, eyes are gonna be on these satellites and we need to figure out the best way to make, to use one of your expressions from a different meeting, lemonade out of lemons, so that no one is challenging the results that we report out on election night.
Okay, thank you very much for your responses. Mr. Garlet, can I turn it over to you for your questions?
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is we have these additional spaces available. We don't know what can or cannot be done to those spaces to make them adequate for what we need, but after my tour of the Johnson Building and seeing kind of what goes on there and what, what took place in 2020, which as we know was incredible for turnout and only expecting to get more, what would be the negatives of getting away from the term satellite for the four-week early voting term, moving everything in person to NAPA, including, you know, voter reg, all that stuff if any issues arise, and then keeping military and mail and all that stuff at the offices that we currently hold? I'm just curious what that would look like as opposed to, and I guess that the reason I'm asking, a big reason I'm asking is, do we even know if both of those buildings were offered or it was an either/or? I don't know to that.
So, so they were both offered to us. We have both options. And so I guess for me, the response to your question would be, you know, do you want to move out of your permanent home into a temporary home? My election supervisor's office is there, voter registration is there, and I've also expressed publicly my concern about voter confusion because our voters are now accustomed, most voters are now accustomed to voting at Johnson Hardware, with the caveat that I still have people who think that they vote at, at the Curry Building. So I don't want to add to voter confusion. I'm not interested at all in giving up space in the Johnson Hardware. So I would not want to see everything moved to NAPA. And the satellite would be to relieve the pressure from people who are already gonna show up at Johnson Hardware, to relieve the pressure on the staff there by having, if there's a long line at Johnson Hardware, then they can go to NAPA. It is not optimal. It is not ideal. I still have those concerns. I don't study traffic patterns, but that's a heavy traffic area, a well-traveled area through the heart of Bloomington, in addition to the environmental concerns I have about people standing out there and voting with those, all those bus fumes.
Can you tell us what's involved in setting up a satellite location as you proposed? Sort of a general outline?
Not in the eight minutes I would need to do it before we have to jump on another meeting.
Can I rephrase the question to a shorter one? I guess, what, what would be the key steps in setting up the NAPA building as a satellite location?
In terms of making sure we have machines, electronic poll books, the staffing? It would be what we do now times two, you know, having an ingress and egress, a flow from the time of check-in to the time of checkout, ample parking, ample signage, the 50-foot chute between the ingress and the candidates who are out there campaigning? That's as quick an answer as I can give you without kind of sitting down and?
Okay, thank you. Now, I just wanted to find out what would have to be moved or replicated at a satellite location as the big picture things and, you know, again, we could discuss more at another meeting or?
And I know I'm stepping on Mr. Garlet's and we have like seven minutes to get where we need to be.
That actually was kind of one of my concerns is the, actually, the reason I asked about moving everything in day, or I'm sorry, in person, to one building and keeping things such as military and overseas and mail-ins at the Johnson Building was because of the staffing issue. Because in my head, and I don't know if this is true, but this is my understanding after tour, everything's kind of done in silos. And if we move a couple of the silos to a specific building to alleviate that pressure and congestion at the Johnson Building, I think that the, while I certainly think there, there are concerns about voter confusion and/or the environmental impact of the people there, I do feel that if we do that, it'll, it'll relieve the staffing, at least that portion of it, the staffing stress. And I think that the voter confusion, albeit a concern, is one that can be easily mitigated by, you know, posting a volunteer or even a sheriff or someone at the Johnson Building and just directing traffic down. And I, and I think the visibility of the NAPA building too would, would, we would be able to, whether it be post, plenty of signage or quite literally paint the whole thing in an American flag or something to that effect. It's wide open spaces, so I think, I think that that could be a possibility. That was my question and possibility in hearing that. Hopefully, see if that was a concern was the staffing and I'm glad you brought that up.
Can I add to that staffing question? Which is that my understanding was that the showers location, it was a lot more expensive per voter or per vote than the space in Election Central. I think at one point we'd said something like it was some number of cents to, for each, that it costs some number of cents for each voter who entered Election Central, but the showers building was something like $13 a voter or, you know, some, the costs were much higher. And so I would just, at some point, love to hear about the costs for using the NAPA and showers locations, just in the interest of minimizing the costs and, you know, just being aware of that issue as well.
Great point.
I certainly, I certainly don't think it would be difficult to get numbers as far as setup, but in terms of the cost, we won't know the cost per voter until after we know how many people take advantage of a satellite. That's where we got that $13 per voter is you, you add up all your, how much it took to operate that satellite and then divided by the number of people who took advantage of it. And so, so for Mr. Donovan, when we had the north end of showers and, and people were standing in line at Election Central, staff would go out and say, hey, if you don't want to wait in line, you know, it's not a very far walk, you can go over to the north end of showers and you can vote just as quickly as you're voting here. People chose not to take advantage of that. And that's, so that was one issue. I've articulated on other meetings, people did not, the parking just was, did not work out for us. The mobility in terms of going into the north end of the showers building, going around to the elevator, taking the elevator up to the second floor. We had a sheriff posted there to say, go this way to vote early. That is not ideal for anyone with mobility issues. I have people who are perfectly able-bodied who say they struggle just going through navigating the north end of showers. And yes, swinging that all back to what you said, Madam Chair, at, when it was all said and done, it was an extremely costly thing and my team actually was able to convince me at that time that we could have run those same amount of voters through Election Central and saved that money and use those resources somewhere else. Now, those, those discussions were pre-pandemic. And so where we would have been able to run a large number of people through, that's not where we are now. We're going to have to have some social distancing. I don't know that we'll ever in our lifetimes be able to go back to where we don't have social distancing. But also, and Mr. Donovan, I'm hoping I answer a question about satellites because I heard you say you wanted to take that name off of it. You know, the point would be to give more people more options. And, and I understood the commissioners to not necessarily want that in the downtown area that everybody doesn't go downtown, which is why I've asked for the satellite topic to be put on the January agenda. So if we already have one downtown, that we can look at other options. But anything to relieve pressure from Election Central where everything is already under one roof, is at least as far as elections, not as far as other things.
Okay, thank you. And presumably by early January, we'll have an idea of what bills have been set forth or will be set forth in the Indiana Legislature that might affect voting and voting by mail and all sorts of things like that. So.
May I just say, because I saw something in the chat, that the meeting was, the joint meeting we're on is supposed to be moved to 11:30?
Yes. So yeah, let me just repeat that, that Karen Wheeler put in the chat that our joint meeting is at 11:30 so we can continue past 11 if needed for this meeting.
This is the first time I'm realizing that, but I was out of the office on Friday.
Me as well. I didn't.
I thought it was 11:00 AM as well.
Yeah. Okay, well, that does give us a little bit more time to discuss the questions already raised or if there are other questions.
You said you had a list, Mr. Donovan.
Yeah, so I think a lot of it has just been answered in discussion. And I think, you know, for clarification purposes, it's not, I'm just trying to understand how we can best serve the voters with the available space that we have or that has been presented and mitigate some of those questions or concerns that, that you as clerk have presented, which are incredibly important. You know, as I was, I would always defer to you for these types of questions as you're the one that, that runs this. I think, you know, looking, looking to 2022, I don't know if it's more important to just relieve the stress from the Johnson Building or to try to also add, and we're just talking for early voting right now, the satellite options, which obviously can be discussed in January. I don't know what this looks like. I know we're being pressured in a good way to get something done and I'm not sure how much time would be needed to make any changes or anything on these additional buildings that, that would be out there. So that's why I'm kind of, not necessarily post those options, but I'm more focused right now at least at getting us what seems to be a square footage need for in-person early voting in the available space. I would certainly agree that the showers building really doesn't seem like a viable option for in-person anything. And it seems as if you had some major issues in 2016. And my understanding is it wasn't used in 2020, correct?
No. So it was, it was offered to us in 2020, in January of 2020. And so that would have been pre-March 2020 when everything shut down. And again, when I spoke with the people who are more hands-on than I, we, it was felt that we, that would not be helpful to us. It hadn't been helpful. I guess the easiest way to say this is the best indicator of future behavior is past behavior. It did not work for us in 2016. I don't have any information at my disposal to think it would work out better for us than it did in 2016. So if you're, for me, if you were gonna make the same mistake, I'd rather make it in a different location. Ergo, it is not optimal to me for NAPA, but if we're gonna try something, you know, if we're gonna throw some spaghetti at the wall to see if it works, then until we get closer to my original request of the commissioners, I would rather try this unless the board would be willing to consider satellites around Monroe County in more rural communities or more rural, access to more rural communities in Monroe County as the commissioners had indicated they were hopeful to see. I said a lot.
No, I, I think that's absolutely a discussion that needs to be had and one that's important. But what I'm, I mean, what I'm hearing, and to be clear to anyone that might be listening, I'm trying to shove about two years' worth of information into a half hour. So although I've had discussions with multiple people of trying to understand the past, present, and hopefully the future, that doesn't happen in a short amount of time. So what I'm hearing though is would, would it just make sense for us to, you know, figuratively check showers off of the list as a, as a non-viable option for anything related to 2022 at this point? I understand we have some storage and other things going on over there, but, and then just focus at least in the next, you know, this meeting and our joint session coming up with the commissioners on what to do and how to do it with, with the available space right now. And again, I think that the other discussion certainly needs to happen, but even given that, I don't know, I don't even know that there's enough time to renovate a building right now. I mean, there's enough time. I don't know if there's enough workforce to renovate a building right now, let alone after we have a discussion in January. So that would just be my concern.
So you know how somebody hands a note to the teacher when, you know, so they can say the right thing in a meeting? I got, I've kind of gotten a note. We definitely would want military and overseas mail to stay at Election Central, but we, the consideration would be for the absentee ballots by mail, the regular absentee ballots by mail to be done at North Showers. We did, so in 2020, a lot of, that was the 20 days at the Nat U-Hill Room that the team was there processing that. at the Nat U Hill Room that the team was there processing that, those absentee ballots by mail, but.
Do you do that space still? Which should, just not.
Just not for, just not for early voting, early in-person voting, excuse me.
Got it.
Okay.
It would require renovations in terms of security um to make sure, you know, that everything was was locked up and bipartisan and everything. So yes, we would use it. Again, we can make anything work, Mr. Donovan. You're 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 going to get to know such an amazing group of people. We can make anything work. The problem is, we make it, we do. We we are accustomed to making it work. And it's going to cut, there's going to come a point where it's going to can, to be untenable to continue making it work.
Right. I certainly agree. And I think that's, that's a discussion that we need to take forth and and continue to push for the idea of getting everything under one roof. I just don't know if that's really uh plausible at this moment and and this given time. But I mean, after hearing three days straight of um multiple county clerks from other counties, um, the election ID, uh, the election division at state, um, all kinds of security issues, we we heard from cybersecurity, from Homeland Security. We heard from people that have just been through it, fellow clerks, other election board members. Um, and if we can do it, the answer certainly seems to be from all available sources to get everything under one roof. I don't think that's even in question. Um, I just don't know how we do that right now, um, given what's what's offered to us or available to us. And I think we need to take the Plan B and the next best step to ensure that we just get something done at this point. And again, I have, I have no idea. I'm I'm unclear on all the dates that were presented and all that good stuff, so I don't want to make any conclusions, but I think this is the information that's available. So my argument would be hearing that we still do the um, some of the the early voting mail by mail and uh tabulation and all that stuff at showers. I think that we should just move ahead with both. And I think in, you know, a few minutes, I don't know what time it is, a half hour or so. We can discuss what renovations are available at those buildings and what needs to be done. And um in terms of physical, uh, whether that be putting up walls, taking down walls, adding bathrooms, changing the structure of a building, I I I don't know. Um, and then in a a different meeting, we can handle security.
So, go ahead. I'm sorry, I cut you off. Please go.
I was just saying, that's just my two cents. That doesn't mean it's the gospel. That's just my two cents.
So Ms. Sherry put something in the chat, which brings to mind something. We we, I think, do an incredible job of advertising early and in-person voting. We have a television commercial that runs in twenty twenty. Um, I had the audio from that commercial run on V ninety-seven. Uh, the League of Women Voters is supportive and puts out signs for us. We also have signs out. So we do advertise a a lot. Um. So Sherry, what Sherry said was, would the board fully support public communications to voters regarding voter at Napa? If this is a voting site for all of early voting days. Uh, public communication would be needed to relieve the pressure on Johnson Hardware and not just having someone on site directing voters to another voting site. I agree with her there. Um, and we're down to, we have twenty-five minutes. This is, this is what I'm gonna recommend. Um, it's the best that, it's what I'm most comfortable with at this time and hope that we can flesh out some of this further in our January meeting. I'm gonna recommend that we have some early voting at Johnson Hardware. That we take the pressure off by having Napa as a satellite. That we discuss the possibility of additional satellites at the January meeting. And that we give a master list of our security needs for Napa and North Showers as a supplement to the Johnson Hardware. Um, the commissioners have offered to go with us to ask for additional funds. I think we could get through the primary with the money that we have in the budget, reassess and go, you know, if we need additional appropriations for the general, that we can all go to the council and ask. Um. That that's what makes the most sense to me at this time, um, so that we're not having heartburn. But I'm just throwing that out there. I assume that, well, on the joint meeting, if we're asked to take a vote, I'm assuming that it would have to be unanimous. But I'm not opposed to trying to figure this out if we end at like eleven twenty, trying to call the Indiana Election Division to see if it's majority or if it has to be unanimous.
I don't even know, are we supposed to be taking that vote now or?
No, we can't take a vote on a work session. Um, in the joint meeting. I'm just based on you and I being at the, at last week's meeting, they wanted a vote at that time. At that time, you were not sworn in for the benefit of the public. Mr. Garlets is completely sworn in, has attended the election conference, ready to go um and and has all the rights, responsibilities and privileges of an election board member. Congratulations, sir. Um, so the soonest that we could take any kind of a vote would be on the joint meeting in twenty-two minutes.
So I mean, what I'm hearing is that we, both buildings are needed. And then the discussion for what seems to fall in line that that would just come after. To me, I don't know that we can make that decision right now, and I think that we need to take all those recommendations into consideration. Um, because there are, I mean, obviously, things would change. Should we have additional locations? Uh, what those needs like are, look like, if we don't have those additional locations, that would change uh what needs to be done to these buildings. But um, there's a lot that goes into this. I I can tell you for a fact, and I'm not a a construction manager or anything like that, but Napa does, no matter what you use it for, it seems like it would need significant uh changes. Just in terms, especially if we're going to have people through there. So um, we definitely need to get that kind of ironed out. I would, that would, that would be my thought.
Agreed. I I guess that what my hope was, and I didn't mean to step on you, Ms. Ronna, if um, if you were getting ready to say something. Because we don't know how the discussions are gonna go in January, I'd rather have a placeholder than not. So that if those discussions failed in January, then we have something that we can advertise. That, that's why my recommendation is the way that it is. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I agree. I think that's helpful. Um, and all I was, I was just gonna add, um, just responding to the question about um, whether we would support, fully support public communications to voters regarding voting at Napa if it's an early voting site. And I just wanted to say, speaking for myself personally, of course, um, I would, um, that's extremely important. And um, then I just wanted to add to what um, the points that Mr. Garlets had raised. Um, you know, I also found um, listening to the Election Administrators Conference to be both, you know, illuminating and very helpful. Um, and I think it was also made clear at that conference that um, in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four going forward, that um, that um, you know, it seems likely that we'll face unique and unprecedented challenges. And everyone is looking forward, looking ahead to those and trying to do the best that they can to mo, make sure that voting goes as smoothly as possible. And that as many people as possible are able to vote. So um, I just wanted to add that I think our concern throughout is to make sure that whatever locations are utilized, that they are as accessible as possible as ab, publicly advertised and communicated as possible, clearly marked, um, noted, um, and all of that. And that, you know, um, I know, I think incredibly highly of all of our election workers and the board and the um clerk's office and know that everyone's gonna work as hard as possible to make all of those things happen. Um, but I just thought it was important to reiterate how important these upcoming election cycles are as well as, you know, just I think how hard everyone is working to make sure that they go as smoothly as possible. Um, I guess to follow up, Clerk Brown, do you feel like you need some time to make any phone calls or anything like that to get additional information from the state um, election officials or anyone else before our eleven thirty meeting?
So I'm happy to put in a call. I don't know that anybody, you you met the people, you met all the actors as far as the um, Indiana Election Division. I'm happy to put a call in. I don't know that I'm gonna have it answered. Many times you have to leave a message, but um, in terms of whether we need a a majority vote or a unanimous vote, um, I I'm happy to put that call in.
Okay, and um, I guess I have a um a um, just a sort of um, process question, which is, as you noted, that we don't take, um, we can't take a vote on this meeting. Um, and um, I guess, well, um, Clerk Brown, will you put forward your proposal at our um joint meeting that follows this session?
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, I'm happy to do that. And um, obviously, there, the the commissioners will have feedback. And then um, we can make the best decision as a joint board for what needs to happen on their meeting. Is that fair?
Thank you. Now, I think that makes sense. Um, as I said, speaking for myself, and I know also Mr. Garlets um is a recent addition to the board. We're learning about how the process works and how to make motions and all of that. So I just wanted to clarify before we join the meeting.
So I was able to Google their number. Um, I'm happy to try to do questions for as long as you want, up until eleven twenty-five. And then um, make that call and let you know what we have to have.
I'm okay.
You're okay. You have all your questions.
For you.
For me. Um.
Yes, I I do as well. I mean, I think it's a lot of information and a lot of, um, just a lot to be figured out. But I appreciate your, um, the information you've provided and how you've set it out for us as we are trying to catch up um, to all that's happened and um, you know, learn the most we can about um, running elections and preparing for the next one.
Thank you.
Well, if there's nothing else, then I'll try to get ahold of a person and then we'll just jump on the joint meeting at eleven thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Are we, what are we, are we recessing because we're coming back in fifteen minutes?
Um, I believe that's correct, that we just recess and then join the eleven thirty meeting. Um, so I'll I'll just, I'll just propose that that we do that. I don't know if I need a motion to recess.
I will make a motion that we recess until the eleven thirty meeting between the election board and the Board of Commissioners.
Second.
And can we have a roll call?
Aye.
I think we're supposed to.
On roll, but.
We probably caught her off guard.
Well, I was listening, but I was sending an an email, sorry. All right, um, Cher, Ronna?
Yes.
And and Clerk Brown?
Yes.
And Member Garlets?
Yes.
And we have it three to, three to zero. The motion has passed.
Thank you. So we will recess now and then um, I'll see you all, I'll plan to see you all at the um, eleven thirty meeting in just a couple of minutes. So thank you so much for your time.
Thanks.